I'd like to call this meeting to order. Everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Roanoke Cedar Grove Times and Star-Ledger newspapers, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. I just have a statement to read about the election. On Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021, the annual school election for the Cedar Grove School District was held between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., and as much longer as was necessary to permit all of the legal voters then present at the polling places to vote. Voting was conducted for the election of two members to the Board of Education for a period of three years. The votes were certified by the Office of the Clerk of Essex County, and the results of the election were as follows. Candidates for three-year terms: Nicole DeChara, 1,749 votes; Haley K. Greco, 1,584 votes; Dawn Dora, 2,751 votes; and Louis Marzullo, 2,961 votes. The candidates elected for the three-year term were Louis Marzullo and Dawn Dora. Now I'd like to call up both Lou and Dawn so we can perform the oath of office. To the front. All right, please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Aye. Lou Marzullo, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And this state under the authority of the people.
And this state under the authority of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Aye. Lou Marzullo, do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
That I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office of member of a Board of Education.
For the office of member of the Board of Education.
And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19,4-1.
And I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19,4-1. And that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to RS 19,4-1.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime.
Or offense listed in New Jersey statute 18A,12-1.
Or offense listed in J.S. 18A,12-1.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of that office.
Perform all the duties of that office.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I'll do a roll call now. Mrs. Dora?
Yes.
Mrs. Di?
Here.
Mr. Marzullo?
Here.
Mrs. Miga?
Here.
And Mr. Shoner?
Present.
All right. All right, next I'd like to ask for a motion to appoint.
I'd like to nominate Dave Shoner for the office of President. I think given his five years of experience on the Board, and his, or I'm sorry, more than five years on the experience, and five years being the VP, he's more than suited for the task at hand, especially during these difficult times with COVID rearing its ugly head again, and everything that I think an experienced Board member needs to have as President.
Mike, do we need to nominate the Board Secretary as temporary chairperson?
Yeah, first we just have to nominate me as a temporary chairperson, so I can conduct the election as Board President. So can I just have a motion for B1, please?
And Mr. DeVito, do I have to repeat what I said before again, or no?
No, it's okay. I'll just do a vote here now. Mrs. Dora?
No.
Mrs. Di?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
No.
Mrs. Miga?
No.
Mr. Shoner? This vote was just to appoint me as a temporary chairperson so I can conduct the Board President?
Oh, yes.
Yes for that? All right. So you want to do those votes again?
Yes.
Good. Otherwise I can just go home. Mrs. Dora?
Yes.
Mrs. Di?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
All right.
Okay. All right, now, so now the floor is open for nominations for President. So I have Dave Shoner.
I'd like to nominate Dawn Dora.
Dawn Dora? Okay, are there any other nominations? All right, seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. Now, according to our bylaws, in order of the nominations, I'll do a roll call vote. So for the first one will be for Dave Shoner to elect him as President of the Board of Education. So a yes vote would be to make him President, and a no vote would be not to make him President. All right? So Mrs. Dora?
No.
Mrs. Di?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
No.
Mrs. Miga?
No.
Mr. Shoner?
Yes.
Okay, so there's only two votes in the affirmative, so that doesn't pass. Next will be for Mrs. Dawn Dora, motion to elect as President of the Board of Education. So a yes vote is an affirmative, and a no vote is no. All right, Mrs. Dora?
Yes.
Mrs. Di?
No.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Miga?
Yes.
And Mr. Shoner?
No.
Okay, so with three votes, Mrs. Dora is elected as Board President.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to open the floor for nominations for Vice President. Michelle Miga has been nominated. So do we go through a vote for Michelle and then go through somebody else?
Yeah, as long as there's no other nominations, then.
Any other nominations at this time? No, okay.
I'll do a roll call. So this is to, motion to elect.
Motion to elect. Michelle Miga.
Michelle Miga as Vice President of the Board of Ed. Mrs. Dora?
Yes.
Mrs. Di?
No.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, the sign-up sheet? Good evening, everybody. Mr. DeVito is just getting the sign-up sheet, but while we are waiting for him to return, there's just a short little memo that Lou and I had put together that I thought was important that we read before we move on with the agenda. I'd like to start off first by saying good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. Before we continue with the agenda, I would like to take a moment on behalf of Lou and I to express our gratitude to the Cedar Grove community for the overwhelming support in electing us to represent the students and the parents of the Cedar Grove School District as Board of Education members. Thank you. We would like to extend our sincerest thanks to each of our families and our friends that provided us with words of encouragement and endless support when the road was long and at times difficult. A thank you is always deserved when people volunteer to become a public servant, and for that, we would like to thank Nicole DeChara and Lenny Splendoria for their service to the school board over these past years. During our campaign, we had the opportunity to meet, listen, and speak to many people. We look forward to working with all the members of the community, with Superintendent Grosso, the Board of Education, and the Town Council, ensuring open communication, transparency, and accountability. Lou and I are both committed to ensuring our school district moves upward, reaching new heights. We look forward to getting started on enhancing the education of our Cedar Grove students. Recently, we saw what our student athletes accomplished when working as a team and in trusting and establishing trust. As we now, it is now our turn to reciprocate that and show them what successes we can achieve by working together and re-establishing that same trust. Thank you from both Lou and myself.[827.41][827.41][applause] At this time, I'd like to have a motion to B4 through B35. So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just have one correction.
Page 14, I believe.
Let's see, Resolution B33, I just made an error in, on the page 15 at the top, Scirillo, Cornell, Merlino, McKibben, and Osborne, that name is going to be coming off of that, so they, all the other names will be on here, but that one will be removed. We have a resolution on to approve them tonight for a two-month period, and then we're going to be doing an RFP. So at our February meeting, we'll be appointing a Board Attorney for the rest of the year. And then I just want to make sure everybody is good on Resolution B6, all of the dates for the Board meetings.
Yep, thank you. Mike, I do have a potential conflict on the 15th of February. I will get back to you.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure.
Roll call.
Mrs. Di?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Aye.
Mrs. Miga?
Yes.
And President Dora?
Yes. At this time, we're opening the meeting to the public for comments on or off the agenda.
Mrs. Dora, before something come up, can I just make a brief?
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
No, no need.
I just wanted to say hello to everyone here and watching at home. Happy New Year and a big welcome back to everyone. I hope everyone had a happy and healthy holiday season. I did not attend any meetings or events since our last meeting, which I usually bring up, but I would like to thank Nicole DeChara and Lenny Splendoria for volunteering their time in their efforts on this Board of Education. This can be a very challenging role, and I wish them and their families all the best going forward. I would also like to welcome Dawn Dora and Lou Marzullo to the Board of Education. I look forward to getting to know you each a little bit better and working with both of you. Thank you for volunteering your time and that you will be putting, the time that you will be putting into your new role in your community, for your community. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Miga.
You're welcome.
Okay. So as I said, at this time, we'll open the meeting to the public for comment on items on and off the agenda. We have about nine people on the list tonight, so I think that's quite manageable. Just ask that you be mindful of the time, we are not going to use the clock at this point, so please be mindful of your time. So first is Mr. Chris Cannella.
Good evening, folks. Chris Cannella, I am the President of the Cedar Grove Education Association. First, I want to congratulate the two new Board members. Dawn, Lou. It takes a lot to want to do this, these times, and thank you for stepping up, and I look forward to working with the two new Board members. I look forward to working with our new Board President. And I want to extend an invitation to Dawn and Mr. Grosso to have a meeting in the next week or two, so we could have, you know, a real honest discussion. I think one of the things I pride myself on is that I like open dialogue, and I think the way, I've always operated in that way, and that's the way I'd like to start off with the new administration. Next, I'd like to thank Mrs. Di for her term as President. And publicly, we sometimes fought privately, we fought a lot. We, but the work that she's done, that I know is not enormously popular in the last year, has been stuff that personally, for me, is, has been life-saving for children, and I thank you for that work, and I look forward to continuing that work with the new Board. I want to thank Lenny and Nicole for serving on the Board. Again, it takes a lot for folks to come from here, to sit up there, you know, I don't know why anybody would do it these days, but thank you because we need people in those positions. Dawn, as I sit here as a gay man, seeing you sit there as a lesbian woman, it makes me enormously proud. It's historical, it's important, and it really is something that, is what drives the work that I do personally. The EDAAC Committee, there's been a lot of conversation about that. And as the President of the Cedar Grove Education Association, I represent members who sit on that committee, and who had a part, I guess, in that survey, and the other work, which, again, we're forgetting, a lot of great work that's come out of that committee. I want to let you know that the Cedar Grove Education Association and our members stand behind our members that sit on that committee. We stand behind that work. That work is important. Don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. That committee must continue, and the work that they do must continue. What else do I have on my little list here? I also want to address a couple members' concerns that we have right now. In the chats that we've had, and my chats get more active when there are more COVID cases, but the first concern is, and I'm putting this out to the public, is these meetings. I look forward, myself, my members, my leadership team, my reps, to getting to a point where we're having conversations with each other and not yelling at each other, not threatening each other, not making things personal. You know, I should not have to, as who I am, walk out of here fearing for my safety, which in some meetings I have. And I look forward for us, for the new leadership and this new Board, to getting this to where that's not the case anymore. Finally, you know, the events of the last couple of days as far as COVID goes, you know, my members are afraid, and I'm just telling you right now. And, you know, Mr. Grosso and I have had a lot of conversations about what's going on, but, you know, I need all these folks in this room, and I need the folks on that table right now to understand, there's a lot of fear, our numbers are enormously high right now, and my members are afraid. And I think we need to start thinking about that, about the folks that work in this building, the children, right, because they're the ones that are getting sick right now, and we have a lot of work to do. With that, good night, folks, good luck, everybody up there. Thank you.[1320.02][1320.02][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Cannella. And I apologize in advance because I'm sure I'm going to butcher a lot of these names. The next one on our list is Guatana Amado Velasquez? How'd I do?
Guatana, it's okay.
Okay, sorry.
I'm used to it, no worries.
I apologize.
No, no worries.
Please just state your full name and your address.
Sure.
Thanks.
Guatana Amado Velasquez, Dogwood Court. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you very much.
I felt compelled to speak tonight due to Christine Di opening Pandora's Box at last Board meeting. I never wanted to have to do this, but Christine Di has forced my hand. As moms, we now have to stand up here and tell the truth to protect our children. I'm also doing this for my daughter and her classmate, who were bullied on the cheer team in 2019. On August 22nd, 2019, I received a text from my daughter stating she was being screamed by senior cheerleaders. I instructed my daughter to ignore them, and I would inform the assistant coach. Moments later, my daughter texted me again to inform me that senior cheerleaders were screaming at her, and her and her teammates who just quit. My daughter was embarrassed, intimidated, and crying. I left work to pick up my daughter. The other mom and I were waiting for our daughters outside. Suddenly, our daughters ran out of the building hysterical crying because senior cheerleaders had chased them outside screaming for them to quit the team. We immediately went to address it with the assistant coach, who responded that she had not seen anything. She had, however, observed what occurred according to the other cheerleaders, but she did nothing. This same coach was not living up to her responsibilities to supervise the team. We immediately sent emails to the superintendent to open up a HIB investigation with text evidence. However, the investigation was conveniently delayed until school officially started, which unacceptable, and no evidence of HIB was found. Why, you ask? Because the senior girls had ample time to instruct the entire team to lie for them. In addition, the assistant coach lied for them to protect herself. Oh, and the surveillance cameras were completely not working that day. Supposedly, they get shut off at 12 o'clock. Senior cheerleaders were reprimanded at all, not at all. In fact, they were promoted to captains, way to protect our bullied-at-risk students. What a great message to send the team, scum to bullying or be forced to quit. While my daughter was crying her eyes out at home, the captain's mother was posting on social medias, "These girls are thick as thieves," with photos of captains taunting the bullied and their mothers. I have evidence saved of all of that am I speaking about today. No one from the school district was there from my daughter and her teammate. How dare you sit up there and say, "My job is to protect my children." Did you protect my daughter? No, you did not. I am appalled to how the administration and the Board of Ed handled this situation. You only protected your friends. The only good thing that came out of this was the coach and the assistant coach get appropriately fired a few months later. My daughter had already quit the team to protect herself. Guess what? She returned for a senior year when the Board of Ed finally hired competent, expert coaches, and she shined like the talented cheerleader she is. Thank you.[1507.02][1507.02][applause]
Thank you, Mr. Velasquez.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for not limiting us to...
Ms. Casilli, if you could just...
Oh, sorry, Lisa Casilli, I live on Dogwood Court.
Thank you.
I should know by now, spoken before. I want to thank you for not limiting us to the three-minute rule because it is really anxiety-provoking to stand here and have to speak like a freight train worried about the clock running out. I promise I will not be more than three minutes, as I've timed myself 15 times, and I know it's about three minutes long. At the last meeting, Christine Di lied about cheerleading as she lies to the public about being a champion for all students. I never wanted to open up old cheerleading wounds since I won that war, but in the words of Christine Di, what the heck? Let's talk about 2019, when cheerleading coaches ignored incessant bullying, which led to one very talented junior quitting after the team was threatened by senior captains to lie for them in a HIB investigation, or they would lose the entire cheer season. Let's talk about Christine Di, who refused to recuse herself from Board of Ed discussions involving her friends' daughters to protect them from consequences for their horrific behavior. Let's talk about how Christine Di protected senior cheerleaders to maintain their captain's status, which created a hostile educational environment and a pervasive culture of harassment, intimidation, and bullying on the cheerleading team. Yes, there is evidence to substantiate everything I am speaking of today. Let's talk about underclassmen cheerleaders begging to get picked up in Newark because they were too afraid to get on the bus to endure more verbal and emotional abuse from senior cheerleaders. Let's talk about underclassmen cheerleaders pleading for help from their coaches only to be told that bullying occurred when they were cheerleaders here and to get over it. Let's talk about senior cheerleaders empowered and allowed to torture others, who then decided to verbally abuse cheer moms by calling us, excuse me, effing skanks in the stands in front of adult witnesses. Let's talk about the Board of Ed ignoring all of the aforementioned behaviors under the direction of President Christine Di, who explicitly directed them to protect her friends' children at all costs. Christine Di picks and chooses who gets protection. Not all students warrant her protection, as the self-proclaimed Pied Piper of the underdog. The facts show that if you are not on Christine Di's nepotistic list of the chosen ones, you are left to rot and die. In our case, parents had to fight for our children with no help from anyone. In the end, we were successful, and the two unqualified, inept coaches were replaced on October 22nd, 2019. Thankfully, TJ Jones and Jacqueline Lasky stepped up to save our daughters after an emergency meeting, perhaps to spare a lawsuit because that was inevitable at that point. The lies perpetuated by Christine Di must be stopped. It is unfair to the parents of this district to wonder if their children will be on the protected list. We deserve equality and fairness for all students, regardless of what bucket Christine Di puts them in. Perhaps the underclassmen cheerleaders, my daughter included, did not fit the right criteria for Christine Di to believe that they warranted protection. Perhaps they did not fit her own narrative of what victims look like. Regardless of what she thought, we knew how to enforce the law and how to protect our children, and we will continue to do so every single day of our lives. With that, I call for the resignation of Christine Di and for the lies to cease immediately, and that includes those who share her lies on social media. I will stand here at every meeting and defend my child and the children who were bullied in 2019. And I didn't want to have to tell this story because we won in every aspect we could possibly win. We have amazing coaches, we have a beautiful cheer team, but when you stand up there and tell stories that aren't true, I will come here before you and I will rectify what... and tell stories that aren't true, I will come here before you and I will rectify what the truth actually is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Casilli. Next, we have Andy Jennings.
Hi, Andy Jennings, West Lindsey Road. Congratulations, Dawn and Lou. I'm a new speaker, so bear with me here. But in my, I have 18 years as a resident in Cedar Grove, and I'm a parent of two kids. And I chose tonight to speak about two things. One, to just educate on a specific DE&amp;I initiative that's already been running in Cedar Grove for three years, and to also give a little bit more context to the statements made at the end of the last meeting. I know Lisa and she already did, but I feel like my points need to be tied together. So first, the initiative. Out of all the volunteering I've ever done in Cedar Grove, none makes me as proud as the work that I've done for Project Cheer Up. For those who do not know, Project Cheer Up is a nonprofit movement that encompasses positivity, leadership, and inclusivity with the ultimate goal to cheer up the world through philanthropic deeds. It is primarily made up of cheerleaders, but our members cover all ages, races, genders, sexual preference, and ethnicities. We have been featured on ABC News, Live with Kelly and Ryan, and other countless local print articles. Our social media is flooded with images of helping those in need, despite race, ethnicity, or political affiliation. But what you may not know about Project Cheer Up is that that was born in response to what happened to the cheerleaders in 2019 and the division that that season caused. The 2019 cheerleading team was plagued with undeserving senior captains, given the authority to think they were allowed to do what they wanted, and inexperienced coaches hired by the BOE who allowed it to continue most of the season. The bullying spanned from freshmen through junior girls, and these were some of the freshmen's first impression of athletics at Cedar Grove. The statement made at the last meeting by Ms. Die kind of blew my mind. She stated that she would stand to protect cheerleaders that were bullied by parents. That statement is false, and it is unfair. And leaving statements like that unchecked, I feel result in more dangerous misinformation to the rest of the community. At that time, parents were forced to be present for cheer events to protect their own children, but this notion was recently twisted around by Ms. Die to protect her friends and further her agenda. Let me be honest with you that parents were not bullying cheerleaders. We were protecting them, modeling for our daughters how to combat what is unacceptable. I find at the end of these meetings that bombs of misinformation are dropped without the ability to rebut them, and I feel that that's a little dangerous. I thrive on facts, okay? So the facts are that Ms. Die knows about Project Cheer Up, as did the principals and the previous principal and superintendent. I find it ironic that with a BOE member so focused on DE&amp;I has never supported, encouraged, or recognized PCU. People from Montana to Texas know about us, but the town of Cedar Grove does not. Maybe that's because it was created by four of the bullied cheerleaders in 2019, who had the courage to turn their horrible experience around for good. Also, it is important to note that these same girls did take that illegal survey, were part of the female population that answered about feeling unsafe in the school district. And I feel with that, our community needs context for statements that are being made by our board. At Project Cheer Up, our hashtag is #leaderswhocheer, because that's what they are. Project Cheer Up embodies the definition, the very definition of DE&amp;I, and we welcome everyone that has a heartbeat. In my opinion, this is Cedar Grove, and I just want to thank you for your time, and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Jennings. Next, we have Agnes Norman.
Good evening, Agnes Norman, 28 Bergen Drive. I'll be very quick. I would like to welcome Mrs. Dawn Dora and Mr. Lou Marzullo to the Board of Ed. I hope that you will continue to work with the parents and the community members on improving the relationship and bridging the huge gap that has been created over the past year. I have one request and one request only at this time, that the members of the EDAC Committee that have contributed to the creation of the survey that was administered to our children in violation of law to be excused from the committee immediately. I don't believe that those members have the best interest of all of our children. Let's face it, you don't need to know a child's gender identity or religious affiliation to know, to find out if the school is a safe space for them. I think appointing new members to the committee would at least ease my mind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Norman. Tonight, at this point, I'm not going to respond to that because being new to the situation that it's only fair that we have the opportunity to have discussions. Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Chupia.
Happy New Year and congratulations to both of you who are new up there, and thank you to all of you who are up there for your time, effort, and commitment and dedication. I have a few positive comments to make. I'd like to say a few things about the Special Services or Special Education Department in Cedar Grove. I am the founder and chair of the Realize Group, which is basically our CPAC, our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which is open to anyone who has children who receive special services. I just want to point out that since my daughter started here, which was 11 years ago at this point, we have had the same Director of Special Services, Mr. Kinney, which is huge. For any of you in education, you know that that position is a very difficult one, and in many districts, the turnover rate there is very high. And so it's, for me, as a parent who is in special education, for those of us who are in special education, we know it's a marathon, not a sprint, and so it's really helpful to have someone who's so committed, dedicated, and sees our families through. He has implemented new programming from the pre-K program, from self-contained to integrated to North End to South End, now an 18 to 21 program, and everything in between. I just wanted to say thank you to the Board of Education for helping to support him, and thank you to Mr. Kinney for all of his efforts and dedication and hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Next, we have Sal Menere.
Hi, my name is Sal Menere, 26 Sweetwood Drive, Cedar Grove, New Jersey. As most of you know, I am a very emotional person, as evidenced by the last meeting. I try to keep my emotions intact because I wanted to verbalize basically what has transpired previously and how myself... I want to congratulate the prior board for giving me a great education, an education about what education is and what is effective education. I'm of belief, and now anybody, if I say anything that you don't disagree with, you can either nod or whatever, but I believe education does not guarantee success. Because, as we evidenced, the elements of a good education that guarantees the success of our children relies on basically three factors. A teacher who has a degree in teaching is essential, but what also is essential, that that particular teacher has wisdom. We know that we have dumb teachers and we have smart teachers. That is not a question because we've seen it and we've experienced it. We've experienced education. When we rely solely on that diploma, okay, we are always disappointed because the most educated people we have, we've gathered into our government. These are, I would think, the most educated people we could possibly bring together. And so far, all our educated people were able to do is put Band-Aids on our problems, and they don't have a permanent solution to our problems. This gets back to, our teachers with wisdom require certain things. They require that their students listen, and they also encourage the students to ask relevant questions. Once they've succeeded in doing that, they send our children out to find out if what they learned was effective. By applying what they've learned, they then determine, okay, if their teacher was smart or the teacher didn't have what it takes to impart upon them. This is essential. What we've seen in the past few months is I've learned indirectly who our smart educators are and who our educators have no wisdom. We've seen, in this Board of Education, two things. They don't listen, they don't respond to our questions, and they haven't assured us that in the future, they have at least learned from the people of wisdom. We were fortunate to have an outstanding person of wisdom, okay, direct questions to the board, and all she got was intimidation, were stifled, and so on. The people that approached this microphone, I'm impressed because I don't know what their education is, but I can tell how smart they are by the questions that they ask and the need to have those questions answered. The board now has two members, who most of us have interviewed, and most of us know their position, okay, that a good instructor needs to have wisdom. I would like to ask this board, okay, to, at this point, we've seen what happened, what is your belief? And how do you want to approach this ongoing problem? And what do you believe in? Do you believe that we have been served properly? And is there anything that has to be changed? And the other thing is, if you believe, okay, that wrongdoing was, did occur, I know our superintendent has given some acknowledgement, but what is more important, they have not acknowledged the people of wisdom, okay, who have given their time and sacrificed for the board. They have not addressed her and at least apologized for what they did, and at least acknowledged that this person of wisdom is, has a lot of, not only an education, but she has experience and she has the wisdom. And I would like to ask each board member what their position and how they proceed, will proceed in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Menere. Next, we have John Martinelli.
You know, Sal, we've known each other a while now, and you're right about wisdom education. Because even though I sound the way I sound, I was actually 40 years on Wall Street and I was a financial analyst. But from where I came from, I don't have, you know what I mean? But nonetheless, you get things done. First off, I want to personally congratulate Dawn Dora and Mr. Marzullo, Lou Marzullo. I want to wish you nothing less than the best, and I feel as of tonight, we turned the corner, and I start to see bright things ahead for Cedar Grove and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. Please bear with me because I'm a little under the weather. Dawn, you said it right. You mentioned a word that I actually have, what I wrote. The word of tonight is accountability. We are all members, why are all members of EDAC who participated and constructed that illegal survey still on EDAC and other committees such as SEL and Board of Ed? The survey has tarnished Cedar Grove's image, divided the town, undisclosed legal fees, and impact on our children as young as eight years old. How do we expect the parents and community as a whole to have any confidence in these committees moving forward if there are no repercussions? The nerve of a former Board of Ed member to scold a parent by telling him to shut up, by the way, he's still on EDAC, speaks volumes of some of the people representing us. I have a question for the board and the superintendent. I just, I saw this posting, and I'm just asking, you don't have to give me an answer, but I'm asking if you condone this. The CGSD education reform, I saw a passage, it's about white passing privilege. Your skin color is white enough for you to pass as white despite your race. And here's the other one. Because of colorism, you are usually not subject to the same prejudices as those with darker skin. To me, it must be like affirmative action, certain race need not apply. Or there are too many Asians in upper education, so many Asian students are turned away even though they score higher than their black, Hispanic, and white counterparts on college entrance exam. In my view, and this is my opinion, you can't fight racism with racism. Lastly, lastly, as a matter of fact, and this goes to the superintendent and several of the members of the Cedar Grove education system, attended an anti-racism webinar that you could find on YouTube, I believe. Well, I and many, many parents, in our opinion, found it to be both racist and offensive. I would like to discuss this in detail by setting up a meeting with Mr. Grasso and a couple other, of many concerned parents to get your take on this.
Thank you, Mr. Martinelli, and I have noted your request to schedule a meeting. Last, we have Vincent Valero.
Vincent Valero, 92 The Fairway. Congratulations, Lou. Congratulations, Dawn. Looking forward to your tenure on the board. I didn't plan on speaking, but something came to my attention, and it was in regards to vaccination, and it's come to my attention that the governor has issued some new guidance, I believe on the 1st of January, regarding the potential of banning unvaccinated students from extracurricular activities. Superintendent Grasso, are you aware of this?
I am, yes.
Okay. The very first thing that our board members did when they were sworn in is they swore an oath to the Constitution of the United States of America, in addition to the Constitution of New Jersey, okay? Mr. Grasso, I just need to ask this, I don't want to take too much time, I really don't want to grandstand, that's not the point. I need to ask you a direct question. Are you going to uphold every student's right to a fair and appropriate public education, a constitutional right, regardless of their vaccination status? And that education includes extracurricular activity, which is an integral part of a fair and appropriate public education. Will you continue to endorse and support that right, sir?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So that concludes our public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Do I have to announce future meetings?
Yep.
Okay, so announcement of future meetings. January 18th, 2022, 6:30 would be executive session, 7:30 would be regular meeting, and then February 15th, 2022, 6:30 executive session, 7:30 regular meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a nice evening, stay safe. Meeting is adjourned.